Good afternoon. This is the Thursday, August 20, 2020, meeting of the Athens City Planning Commission. One member is absent today. The rest have established a quorum. Is there anyone who intends to speak to the Planning Commission today? Any representatives from the school board or solar zoning or whatever? No?
Glenn Decker, Sands Decker here for Athens Middle School.
Okay. Let's see. Well, Mr. Decker, do you swear to tell the truth to the Planning Commission as you know it?
I do.
Thank you very much. A disposition of minutes from our August 6th meeting. If anybody has any changes, additions, observations that they'd like to make for that August 6th meeting? I'll make a motion to adopt the meeting to make it pass. I'm sorry. Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? The disposition of the minutes have been accepted. Case number 20-08, Title 41, Athens Middle School renovation. See, Mr. Riggs, do you care to again update us about that?
Yeah. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Hello, everybody. Yeah, this is the Athens Middle School. There have been no significant changes from the original presentation. I checked today to make sure that the review staff didn't have any additional comments, and there are no additional comments from Bob Hedy Engineering or from Chief Primer in Fire Department. I don't think the police had any comments from the initial, from the initial review, so I did not follow up with them. But they, this will be similar or almost exactly the same as the original, sorry, I can't talk today, as the original comment from a couple weeks ago.
Thank you, Mr. Riggs. Does anybody from the Commission have any questions directed to Mr. Decker? Okay. Would somebody like to speak just in general about it before we make a motion to move ahead? Okay. Does anybody care to make a motion today?
We approve Title 41 for Athens Middle School.
Okay. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So all the Commission members have voted approval. Thank you very much. Let's see. Moving on to case 20-09, the solar zoning changes recommendation from the Environment and Sustainability Commission. Mr. Riggs or Mr. Logue, if either one of you want to handle that? Or the mayor, who's involved, who do you point personize on that?
Did you want to say something, Mayor?
No, I was gonna say I'm gonna defer to Paul.
Sure. Very good. Thank you, RJ. I can speak on it. I am of the mayor's appointment to the Athens City Sustainability Commission, so I'm one of 11 members of that committee or commission, excuse me. I typically, you know, I make sure that the meetings are run, and I try to participate by helping take minutes and all that fun stuff. As you may recall, about a year and a half ago, there was a, the city was working with, I believe it was Upgrade Ohio at the time, or Upgrade Athens County, and looking to do what was called a Soul Smart designation for the city of Athens, and that was awarded. And that basically, it's that we're trying to move towards getting the city to be more equipped to provide deployment of solar on rooftops around our community. I think we received a bronze status from the Solar Vision Organization or the Soul Smart Organization. We were looking to try to do more, and one of the recommendations was to evaluate our zoning code to see where we might have small barriers to solar deployment that could either prohibit it from happening on residential rooftops, or necessitate the need for a variance or something like that that could either slow it down or prohibit it from happening. So the Sustainability Commission spent some time reviewing the zoning code to try to help move that along a little bit. The Soul Smart Organization gave some guidance on things that we should be looking for as well. And then, this was presented back to the Planning Commission in early 2020, and then it got, our initial goal was to try to advance this for Earth Month, which was April of 2020, but because of the pandemic, all of our Earth Month and Earth Day efforts were essentially postponed. So we're trying to bring this back. If you have any questions about the recommendations, I'm more than happy to try to explain them as well as I can. Also, David Riggs, of course, may have some more detail he can flesh out from the zoning perspective.
Are there any questions from the Commission?
I don't have a question. I have a comment. You know, back in, back in 2017, I entered in with a number of mayors from across the U.S. to uphold and continue down the path of the Paris Climate Accord. You know, I have certainly been involved in the carbon fee initiative that was unanimously passed by the citizens of Athens to have solar be something that all of us would pay an extra couple cents to have solar on municipal buildings, government buildings, mercantile accounts here in the city. And I've also been involved with Soul Smart and with our initial acceptance of our bronze rating. You know, I feel strongly that we should continue to pursue our efforts to make for a healthier planet and do our own piece, you know, of positive stewardship moving forward. So I applaud this coming forward. I don't have any questions about the language that's in here. I just, I feel strongly that this is the right path to take to where residents can have a more streamlined way of having solar for their own residence if they choose to do so, which would only augment the green energy that we're all receiving through our electric aggregation with SOPEC. We are 100% renewable, but that's currently coming from wind wrecks in Texas. And I think that we need to continue to do our part to where we are continuing to stay green, but that's coming from right here in the state of Ohio and preferably in Athens, Ohio.
Paul, I had a couple questions on 230326, solar access easement. We say owners of accessory solar energy systems are solely responsible for negotiating with other property owners for any desired solar easements. So if somebody does have a beef about somebody's attempt to put in their system that they feel might obstruct their property rights or what have you, they get nowhere, then they're just off to small claims court, or what's the, yeah, just my, we're just dropping it, in other words, in the neighborhood's lap?
So, the, this is, the solar access easement language is describing the situation where somebody has, for example, solar panels on their rooftop, and they would like to talk to their property owner to ensure that they continue to have access to solar into the future. So that's a discussion about trimming of trees on an adjoining property owner's property. The default would be that if you've got a tree on your property, it's allowed to grow as high as it wants to, and if it creates shade on a neighbor's property, it creates shade on a neighbor's property. And that's how we've, that's what this language is saying, is that the default is that the tree is staying in place. And the city is not going to intervene to try to negotiate something between two adjoining property owners to ensure that one property has access to sunlight. That's between the two of them to manage. There's already a language within Ohio Revised Code. I was trying to find language on this, and I was surprised to find out that there is solar access easement language in Ohio Revised Code since, I think, 1979, believe it or not. And I thought this was actually a new idea, so it's been around for some time. Relating to, I think, your understanding of it, you know, if a property owner is allowed to put solar panels on their property, there should be an adjoining property owner, if they're approved by zoning to do so, just like any, you know, if they're allowed to build an addition or a garage or a driveway or put up a basketball hoop or anything like that. The same rule would apply here. The property owner, the adjoining property owner has no grounds to argue or negotiate to prevent that from, prohibit that from happening.
Okay. And then currently, rooftops are the only place where residents in the town, in the city can build solar, their energy system? In other words, you can't put it in some of your front yard, things of that nature, backyard?
We would treat those as being an accessory structure on their own. So, for example, if you wanted to put a mounted something in your backyard, this is really focusing on rooftops. So if you, if you're, if you have a garage or you have a home, you can put solar panels on your rooftops. If you wanted to build a solar structure in your backyard or in your front yard, for that matter, we would treat, we would treat that just like any other accessory structure, and it needs to follow the existing rules and city code for that. So if you're not allowed to have an accessory structure in your front yard, which typically you're not allowed to, and you wanted to do so, you would need to go through the Board of Zoning Appeals process in order to achieve that. We're not going to allow that by right through this code. We talked about that, actually, and we, it was pretty clear to me that that would, that to me, that felt like something that could be a deal breaker for a lot of community members, would be to have additional structures coming up without having a vetting process for it. So I did not think that was wise to put in here personally or professionally, I suppose, but rooftops seemed, seemed acceptable to most people, if not all people.
Okay. Did anybody else have any questions or comments?
Just have one kind of quick, it's a semantic question, semantics question about 230307. When you say solar energy systems on flat roofs?
Right. So that, oh, I'm sorry, Kristy, please repeat.
Was I, was my mic on? I don't know if I was, did you hear what I was saying about 2303? Okay. So I guess my concern is, I think of flat roofs as like multi-story commercial buildings, but we're talking about roofs with an appropriate residential pitch as well, right?
Yes. Well, this would be, so, for example, if you have a flat roof and the maximum roof height within that zone is, let's say it's 35 feet, and your flat roof is at 35 feet, that if you're, if you're putting solar panels on top of that flat roof, and those solar panels increase, the peak of them or the height of the panel, say it's an additional two feet, we're not going to count that as part of the height requirement for the building.
Okay.
So they can, you can put the solar panels on a flat roof, even if the flat roof's at 35 feet, without having to go to get a variance because the peak of the panels is two feet above that. Same way we treat church spires and flagpoles and things of that nature, television antennas, et cetera.
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to clarify. So we're not just talking these, if there's a pitched roof, a residential roof, and with the, with the structure, it goes above the 35 feet or whatever's available, whatever's allowed in that particular zoning category, that counts too. It doesn't have to be just a flat surface roof, correct?
Correct, yeah. And I, that's an interesting question. We didn't think, we didn't really consider the pitched roof too much, just generally because the height of the, the peak of the, the panel's unlikely to exceed the peak of the pitch, I guess, at the top. And so I didn't think, we, like I said, we didn't really discuss that. We might want to consider a change for that or see how it goes.
And I might be, you know, it might not be an issue in terms of, I'm not as familiar with the hardware and exactly the way things might look on a pitched roof and that sort of thing. So it might not be an issue at all, but that's the one area that was confusing a little bit to me.
Right. We could certainly add, we could certainly make that change, solar energy systems on flat or peaked roofs or pitched roofs.
Are there any other questions?
I don't think that would, I don't think that would be a problem.
I mean, I defer to whatever Williams thinks, but, you know, it could potentially, just an extra word or two could potentially save some confusion later.
Yeah.
And Paul, are you willing to table this right now to insert the language that Kristy would like, or should we just go ahead and?
I think it's pretty simple. From my standpoint, I think you could just, we could just say, amended to say on flat or pitched roofs.
I agree with that. I mean, this is communication. So I think at this point, when it comes forward as a case, you know, to make that-
This is a case.
Oh, well, then the amendment, I agree with Kristy, you know, just a simple amendment. Because I could see maybe a pitched roof that is facing east-west, and therefore to put, if they wanted to put one right on the peak, you know, it's going to prop that up. It's going to exceed it by, you know, a foot or two due to the angle that they would have to get on if they wanted to run right down the ridge line of that rooftop. So I appreciate what you're saying, Kristy, and I would say that maybe we just amend it to include both pitched and flat roofs.
That works for me.
And I would make one other comment, just of a typo for the recommended for 230326. The third line where it says any such easements must, it should have the word "be" after that, must be consistent.
Okay. Okay, so, shall we go ahead, Mayor, and vote on this now with the contingents? Okay. Someone want to make a motion on that?
I would like to make a motion to adopt, and my agenda is not up, adopt case 0209 for the solar zoning changes with the caveat that there will be inserted an amendment to include under 23.03.07, solar energy systems on flat and pitched roofs, as well as under 2303.26, to include any such easements must, help me out, Paul Logue.
Must be consistent.
Must be, thank you.
Must be, sorry about that.
Must be consistent for this particular case.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes unanimously with one abstention. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Moving right along to Paul. We have in communications here, the introduction of the 2040 Athens City Comprehensive Plan. And thank you for all the work that you've put into this, Paul. We appreciate it, all the guidance you've given people, and we're anxious to hear a little bit about it. Do you want to go ahead?
Thank you. Let me see if I can do a share screen here and pull it up. It's a presentation. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Try to make it bigger. Okay, there we go. Just a few comments before we get started, and I will try to keep this brief. We do have the plan as well as a survey document. They are available for public scrutiny. We have a deadline I posted for tomorrow. If people trickle in afterwards, I'm going to definitely, you know, we're not, I'm not going to rule out reviewing and taking comments after that date. The goal is to try to get people to continue to provide some feedback until we get this all wrapped up. I have received a lot of feedback in the last couple weeks, and I'm very happy about that. I've also been trying to reach out to, I did a meeting with, tried to do a meeting with the West Side Community Association earlier this week to answer any questions and review it. I had one person participate, but that's okay. I also have scheduled a Zoom call with members of the Far East Neighborhood Association the first week, or in a week and a half or two weeks from today, to try to discuss with them in detail about some of their concerns. So trying to do our best to try to make sure that people are aware of the plan. It does seem as if we're, it's getting some attention over the last couple of weeks, so I'm very pleased about that. Just a little bit of background for everybody. As most of you are aware, our current comprehensive plan was complete about 15 years ago, and City Council adopted it a couple years, or a couple years after that. A lot of the, a lot of the information and recommendations from the last plan have been completed, or some of the issues are no longer salient or relevant. And so we're kind of at a point where we needed to do an updated, update the plan and talk about the next 20 years. That plan was the Athens 2020 Plan, and it's 2020, so it's time to think about 2021 and beyond. The planning process is rooted in a lot of other planning documents that we, to make sure that we're kind of all working on the same page. That includes Athens County Economic Development Plan, the university's planning. We have a lot of city plans already on the books, including a bike and pedestrian, arts planning, parks and recs, sustainability, Affordable Housing Commission, et cetera. Take a 20-year look generally for a plan, as you all are aware, and the plan, it's comprehensive in nature, and so we're trying to pull, how to pull everything together into one cohesive document. The, some process objectives, we wanted to make sure that we had a lot of citizen engagement on this plan. We tried to do various, a lot of different ways of getting feedback from people. I tried to seek out contributions from people who are typically underrepresented in planning processes, one of which that we've, or two groups specifically, we tried to work very closely with our disabilities groups, as well as people on the autism spectrum. And I specifically tried to seek out undergraduate and the student community from Ohio University. They are, of course, our largest population within the city, and they, we generally don't talk to them about what their needs might be. I also really tried to keep the external or the expenses to a minimum for this plan, our, the 2020 plan that was begun in the early 2000s. Nancy might remember more, but I believe that cost over $250,000, maybe, or upwards of that. This plan, we, I think total costs are going to be, with the exception of my salary and interns, we're coming in at under $10,000 bucks. So I'm pretty happy about the price that we're getting for this, for this document. You know, plan, we need to be responsive to the external influences. There are things we don't have control over as a city. There's things that kind of happen, technology changes, we get pressure for things like scooters and just apps. All those things kind of change the shape of our city. The university enrollment issues, sometimes we don't have control over that. Obviously, a pandemic is something that is an external influence that we didn't necessarily think about when this planning process started, but clearly it's going to, it influences some of the decisions that we'll make in the future. And we, I wanted to keep this plan, make sure it was accessible and transparent as far as the process and communication with the community. I'm going to skip this part, since I think we're pretty well familiar with the process. But I think just to kind of look at this high level for a first conversation with the Planning Commission, what you're seeing on your screen right now are kind of the broad, the big picture takeaways of, I think, really where we need to be thinking and what the community is expecting, us as public officials and Commission members and elected officials, what they're really, what they want to see from us and some of those needs. It probably goes without saying today, but we have a serious need to diversify our local economy, especially with good-paying jobs, with good benefits. Those are things that historically, we've allowed Ohio University to be the leader on supporting that, and we are a college town, so of course, the university's presence is incredibly important to who we are. However, we need to try to balance out the risks of being a one employer community to make sure that we've got other opportunities for people to live and to work in Athens. And so really looking at that, how do we diversify the economy is crucial here. Also, there's not a lot of room to grow in Athens as far as expanding our boundaries. There's, there's a lot of complicating factors to growing out and sprawling, to say the least, is the cost of maintenance of city infrastructure when we do so, stretching out first responders and their opportunity to respond, especially police and fire, flood plain issues, hillside issues, local politics, all of those are real, real issues that we need to be concerned about. Through the process, we also heard over and over again that the community as a whole is interested in more opportunity for renewable energies, for clean energy for our community, moving away from carbon-reliant fossil fuels. Also, when we do public art and when we do historic preservation efforts, that is incredibly well-received by the community. There's clear consensus that our community really appreciates when we do that type of work, and they want to see more of that preservation, of course, you know, telling the history of Athens and telling our story. A lot of that can be done by the, making sure that we have high-quality historic buildings in our community. Another key takeaway is that some of our corridors are ripe for change and are going to change whether we do anything or not. Union Street is well underway for change with a couple new buildings underway, some university changes with Heritage College of Medicine, that new building coming online very soon, as well as engineering spreading into the, what used to be the HDL or the WUSOC Center. There's opportunities for us to really try to support that change, but also try to reposition Union Street as a economic development and corridor where we can get more employment sectors added. Inclusion, we heard from a lot of people that, you know, I shouldn't say we heard from a lot of people, but the better way to look at this is, we want to make sure that Athens is a place where people of all faiths and colors and backgrounds can feel as if this is a place that they can call home. And in order to do that, one of the key things is that they're, they're looking to find ways to, that they need to see that they're, that they are reflected back in the community. We did hear from a lot of people that one of the, and it's clear to me that the African-American, the black community in Athens isn't very well-reflected in our community. We've, and so when we're trying to, we want black people to be members of our community, which of course we do, and I certainly want to see that. We need to take some effort to make sure that there's an opportunity there for them. One of the things that this plan talks about is the utilizing the Mount Zion Church Building as an anchor for the black community in Athens to help better tell their story and have a place that's kind of done for them as a primary user. Additionally, disabilities planning and the need for infrastructure, especially public infrastructure that is built for the needs of our disabled community, that's incredibly important for them for equality of life, but also there's benefits to all of us who are able-bodied at this time, and as well as, as we're going through the aging process, to have high-quality infrastructure, sidewalks, curbs, access to buildings, all of those things that are built with the needs of our disabled community in mind, but also with their consultation. There's a lot of little things that they're aware of, of course, that if you're able-bodied, you may not, you're not going to see. That can be a real hazard for them and make it just a challenge for them to get, get through their day. The other key takeaway I want to really restate for the Planning Commission is that our housing needs in general are not being met. The mix of housing that we, that is available in Athens, the price points for housing in Athens, the, the opportunities for people who are disabled or have income issues or seniors, we don't provide them with the housing in general that people, that a lot of people would choose to live in if they could. We don't have townhouse-style housing. We don't have a lot of condominium opportunities for people. We don't have universal design housing for people who have, as they're going through the aging process or have a disability. The one type of housing we do really well in Athens, most people said, is undergraduate off-campus student housing. And if, when we talk to under-
I just signed off. Sorry.
Looks like Paul Logue is frozen.
Yeah.
You hit something down there. I got your thumb, I was-
You hit something down there, got your thumb is down here. Hold on, you want to end?
Uh, well, let's give this a few more moments.
What was I giving? What was the problem?
Uh, Mayor, is there something that you would like to, uh, discuss to fill in some time here?
Always have something to discuss. Um, I, I was just on a show earlier today and something not necessarily planning related, um, but certainly encouraging the citizens of Athens, um, as Ohio University, there's the largely off-campus students, they start moving in, they started last weekend, some started over the summer, but we'll see likely more moving in this weekend. Just everybody, you know, be mindful of that and to, um, plan on maybe doing your grocery shopping, uh, today or tomorrow or, uh, midweek next week. Uh, but I suspect that a lot of our retail will have a large number of people in them, um, who may not, uh, maybe coming from elsewhere. So, um, and to remind people of the masking ordinance, which is still, uh, in full effect here in the city of Athens, a face covering ordinance and asking people when you're out in public or entering into businesses that are open to the public, to make sure you cover up.
Uh, Mayor, I know you've been very busy, uh, in, in terms of business in Athens and how we, uh, move forward, uh, less reliance on the university, uh, things of that nature. Um, what kind of things, uh, are you looking at in terms of how do we start to fill the void, uh, that the university might be leaving behind?
Well, a number of things. Um, RJ, you know, first and foremost, um, we're going to see Menards opening sometime in September, I believe, um, which will be great because that'll, you know, be a hundred plus jobs there. Uh, it'll drive a lot of people, like it or not, it, I tend to like it, into Athens that might be shopping at some of our other establishments here in Athens.
Right.
The other thing to share, RJ, is that, uh, the Bailey Trail System, uh, which is, has a major trailhead in Chancy, um, is 15 miles of mountain biking trail that is open. Um, there is 11 miles that is under construction as we speak. I received a phone call last Friday, um, a week ago this Friday from an individual from Columbus saying, Mayor, can you give me an update as to what the weather looks like in Athens? Cause I want to bring a large group of mountain bikers to Athens to get on the Bailey Trail System. And RJ, that's another form of, of diversifying our economic portfolio by having more tourists come into Athens. Now granted, we're in the, under COVID-19, but still, you know, people, when they come and visit places, they're going to likely be spending in some of our, um, sundry of establishments, um, and that will certainly be helpful to them. But I am always open to other businesses that are looking at Athens as a place to live, work and play. You know, I think people have learned that, uh, remote working, working remotely works and you don't necessarily have to be in a large metroplex to get your work done for company X, Y, and Z, that you can live elsewhere, work remotely. So I'm, I'm always encouraging people to look at Athens as a, an amazing place to, um, rent someplace or to purchase a house because again, like major companies are recognizing already that they don't need to have the massive overhead of a bricks and mortar building for all their employees that they can actually downsize. And I want to make it clear that, you know, I think Athens would be a wonderful place for someone who is wanting to work remotely to, to come down here and, and lay down roots.
Uh, Scott, I don't know, I don't have a, see if I was doing true television, I'd have a, a thing in my ear here where Scott was letting me know what's going on. Um, so anyway-
RJ?
Yes.
Um, I've been texting with him, he's trying to restart his router.
Okay.
Yeah, I've been-
What I was going to suggest is since everybody is, or a couple of you are on hard time here, hard deadlines, that if we can't restore Paul within a moment or two, that maybe we want to just move on with say David's report and just work around it and, uh, Paul can pick up at the next meeting. Does that sound okay?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, why don't we just go ahead and do that now and have David give us the update? And then when Paul jumps back in, he can pick up where he left off.
Terrific. Hi, David, what's going on?
Hey, uh, well, I actually don't have anything to report, so, uh, sorry.
Man.
So then I'm going to flip, I'm going to flip RJ's question to you, David.
You're going to make a terrible we, you're going to make a terrible weatherman, David.
David, are you being approached by, um, any new businesses or establishments that want to set up shop here in Athens? Good, good question for, uh, Director of Development and Code Enforcement.
Yeah, we have heard, um, some, uh, some rumblings about, uh, um, like a, um, small big box, uh, smaller style big box store, uh, wanting to come in. We also have, I just had a meeting yesterday with, uh, uh, some folks who were, who were interested in annexing, uh, a residential into the city and they're moving forward with that. I think it's going to be a really good development. Um, it's, uh, we hope it's going to be for, uh, um, Senior Living Center, um, which is something we really do need in the city. Uh, we're kind of, uh, we're kind of shy on the, on, on those kind of places for, for people to live. So this would be, this would be great if it comes in and we're moving in that direction. I see Paul's back.
And that's probably David, a good segue to Paul, because I know that's in the comprehensive plan, plan when it comes to housing.
Yes.
Uh, Paul, are you ready?
I am, I'm, I am sorry about that. Talk about, talk about the need for solar on a rooftop. Um, the, the whole neighborhood flickered all at once and, uh, I've got the window open right next to me and I could hear, I could hear something pop in the, uh, somewhere in one of the neighbors' yards. So, um, everything is back. I apologize for that though. Lesson learned about not having battery backup when you're working from home. Um, how are we on time, uh? Are we, are we okay? I think Mayor, you, you need a hard stop at one of them, not mistake.
I was planning on like about maybe five or 10 more minutes and then just going into, we've done, uh, the report from David and we can just move into the opportunity for citizens speaking about five or six minutes. How's that?
That, that would be fine.
Okay.
Um, it, would you, would you prefer that I stop at this point with the, my talking to get some-
That, that might be good because I know you want to get your stuff all together and, uh, we want to hear all this in a cohesive fashion. So maybe that's a good idea.
Okay.
If you're open to that.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Um, we'll see. The opportunity for, uh, citizens to speak, um, about anything not covered on the agenda. Patty or Scott, do we have anybody on the, on the phones for that?
We do have one attendee, um, I don't know, that attendee wants to speak on anything.
Yeah, I don't see anybody raising their hand at the moment.
Okay. Uh, announcements and other business. Uh, anyone have anything that they would like to bring up? Mayor, David, Paul? Okay. Uh, our next meeting will be, uh, September 3rd, 2020. Uh, with the business of the Athens City Planning Commission concluded today, this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you very much.